In enclosed garages, two cars for lot eight and three cars for lot seven and nine. Vehicle access would be via sixteen foot wide driveway. In the comments, the Department of Building and Safety is zoning space at a minimum twenty-foot access strip to provide with parkage and/or vehicle access purposes for all the lots populated by private street. The applicant is requested to either revise the map or obtain approval from the county department to reduce access strip. Building and safety is also requesting the applicant to obtain approval from the advisory agency for projection of parking spaces and trashing enclosures into the required five foot yard setback. Reports received were from the Bureau of Engineering. These reports that the track map layout is satisfactory submitted and recommends approval subject conditions upon the city zoning provision upon the transportation, fire department, San Luis Pina High School District, Bureau of Street Lighting, and the Bureau of Sanitation. The conditions have been incorporated to the staff report. The project was issued mitigated in a declaration EMV 2014-7, meaning team coming thirteen. Two letters and a phone call were received in opposition to the project. The comments expressed opposition to the demolition of the 1921 Craftsman and Bungalow, decrease in noise, traffic, height of the buildings, parking, and location of trash pickup. Staff did receive a phone call this morning from a member of the Land use Committee of the neighborhood council, which they stated that the land use committee is in opposition to the proposed project pending full approval of the neighborhood council. County staff was also informed after the writing of the staff report of a city council motion to initiate proceedings to establish the Berkshire Craftsman Revival Bungalow District Historic Preservation Overlay Zone and have the pine department work with CD fourteen to establish a geographic geographical boundaries, also to prepare an interim control ordinance to prohibit the issuance of demolition building raiding permits within proposed historic district. In light of foregoing, pine department staff recommends that the case be taken under advisement.
All right, thank you very much. Now, there was an amendment to the staff report, instead of do you recommend approval originally?
Reason I recommend.
And now the recommendation is to complete case of their advisement pending, I believe, more than any historic preservation issues, but we will have a conversation on that. Who is the applicant, the applicant man? Okay, who is going to speak to this?
Oh, I'm the applicant.
Okay. So forward say your name and address for the record.
Yes. Good morning. My name is Ada Lau, resident of San Francisco, Manhattan, New York, South Pasadena, and the architect and also the owner of this property. So basically, when I, you know, I've spent a lot of apartments and condos in Los Angeles in the last thirty years, so, and when I read about this small lot and the merits of it, you know, I really wanted to, to want to move it. So instead of doing an apartment unit, which, you know, with the best of the bonus and so on, I could go up to, you know, thirteen units, so I decided to do a nine-unit small lot and also decided to, instead of doing like a long row of buildings, of nine buildings in one single row, I decided to put them in three different buildings, which is a form that is not foreign to the neighborhood. This block is basically made up of mostly apartments, bungalow, court, and some in the family and some commercial buildings. So like for instance, you can see, this is a picture of some of the apartments on the, on the block, and this one has about, some of that has about the same massing and height and also in terms of the, similar to what I'm proposing, similar to what I'm proposing here. And also for this, the view and from the windows, instead of looking into the neighbor's yard, like one single row of rowhouse would be, this one would be like looking into the courtyard of the street.
Question, when did you apply for this?
When was said?
When did you apply for this?
Uh, this one was, the application was posted on January first, uh, second, I'm sorry, January second.
Okay, this is before the mandate to go through the same guidelines, okay?
Yeah.
You still need to comply with some requirements.
Well, I agree with you, yeah. I study those and I'm so, visited a lot of those small projects, so.
Okay, anything else? Because you may come back to answer some of the issue.
Sure, yeah.
Based by the, you know, whoever wants to bring up. Thank you. Who wants to speak on this from the first row? Just come forward. Good morning.
My name is Walt Disuames Bluffson. I live at fifty-six eighteen Berkshire Drive, and my property immediately abus this subject property, backyard to backyard. The community has been organizing to create an historical overlay for several years and recently received the support of the city councilmen for that purpose. And consultants have been hired to do a survey throughout the community to determine which homes are contributing, which homes are historic. My personal home has been designated as one of three within the three-block area of the Meris National Historic Standing, and one of the key homes that was cited came the Seven Ten Freeway studies as being significant in the Osceville community. The home that is the subject of this request is a historic home and is identified as a contributing home in studies that were done by the Seven Ten Freeway project.
Do you have, when you say studies, I understand that there was a designation, although I can't simply, if you hear evidence, did by Caltrans?
That's right.
And, but I, do you know what document we're talking about?
I don't have.
Do you talk about actual designation?
Yeah, I, I don't have a copy with me. This property was designated as contributory to the historic area. And perhaps one of my neighbors may have that document.
But they said, uh.
Third-hand blowout, Rivera, Deltranz, or probably that's something.
Yeah, sorry.
So, well, based also on all of this, and the fact that the city councilman, when he learned of this project, did present a motion to freeze any demolition permits until the property's study is completed. So that process is just undergoing. Now, in reference to the compliance with this process, I mean, learned of this project accidentally, literally one day before the local community public hearing at the neighborhood council. And had I not read a particular straight email, none of my neighbors would have known because I'm the one who walked around and told my neighbors about it. So there was no appropriate operating. And the developer did come and scheme to my wife the day before and represented that the neighborhood had no say and that he was merely as courtesy telling people that he was going to do this and did not notify people or give notice of the fact that a public hearing was about to occur. So there was certainly deficiency and lack of compliance or good faith with the notice requirements of letting everyone know within five hundred feet of the subject property. We vehemently object to the notion of tearing down this beautiful Craftsman home, and if it were being torn down, we vehemently object to the thirty-five feet height, which would tower over all the neighbors. There is no building that approaches thirty-five feet, and this would tower from my backyard, which I would definitely pose in court and with other resources that I might have.
All right, thank you very much. You have joined the property to what side of the?
Backer, backer, backer.
To the back. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else from the first row? Can you come forward? Please say your name and address for the record.
Dr. Tom Williams, four-one-one-seven Berne Road, LA, nine zero zero three-two. Past member of the LA thirty-two Neighborhood Council Board, also a member of the Sierra Club Transportation Committee. We're quite concerned about this project because it's just one lot, you know, but it's a problem. This is the first lot of three stories within the city of LA along Huntington Drive. Problem is how Pasadena going in. It's the first, would be the first one. It's also immediately within the intersection of Main and Huntington Drive, and it only has a single point of access. I am not against small lot subdivisions, as long as they have direct access to the street. We've seen other ones being proposed where it has one in, one out, but there's this fundamental problem. Who's going to be in charge of this? We don't know.
Okay, but you're concerned you have these access and safety.
Safety, presence, aesthetics, the fact that it's the first, would be the first recent building in the LA corridor as a punt piece for LA to the rest of San Gabriel Valley. There's also a matter that we reviewed, the environmental considerations, the mitigated negative declaration is incomplete and inadequate. Example, cultural resources, the only cultural resources that are discussed are archaeological. There's no historic presentation. There's no discussion regarding the historic litigation that could be done, photography, plans and stuff like that. There's also for the public works as to who's going to be in charge of the water pipes, sewers, storm drains, it's not compliant with L I D and several other.
Okay, just include your, your comments.
I'm used to watching the talk.
I, I'm not really taking time strictly, but I, you know, I'm, okay, the third time because, because to be, to be fair to the staff, staff consulted with some people in historic resources, they said there was an issue, then there was an in-depth, you know, inquiry, and there are issues, so.
There's definitely issues.
That's what I, but I understand what, you know, some of the concerns.
One of the things that people don't realize is the height of these buildings, you might say adjacent to the property lines on at least two sides affects historic buildings. The lot to the west of this particular lot is also a similar Craftsman. There's also a hundred that, this is about three to four feet above the road level of Huntington Drive, but it's about ten to twelve feet above the road level of Berkshire Drive on the back side. So it will very, have a pretty large mass dominance of the view line from the.
All right, thank you very much. I will, I will leave it there. So anybody else from, who wants to testify, the second row, third row? Can you come forward please?
Good morning. First, here's a map of the proposed HPOZ for the Caltrans. I've labeled with the address the property question. My name is Francisco Rivera. I live at five-six-three-three Huntington Drive, north Los Angeles, nine zero zero three-two. I live in the property just west of the proposed site. We shared the entire side, you know, the city manager's. I'll keep my statements brief because the foreword is long and I actually won't pronounce it, so I'll leave them here as well. I'll try to make it as possible. There's many, many issues I can mention, for maybe a single space. I'm concerned about the degradation of historical partners, Los Angeles, the review of, the review, three-star content motion regarding the Berkshire Craftsman Revival Bungalow District HPOZ, and from, I understand, it, the rules of pump maybe has a recess last week, due to the traffic impact at the intersection of Huntington Drive and Main Street. Mr. Lau proposed to the driveway service twenty spaces that will bend directly into a highly trafficked intersection, and anybody who goes down that corner would know that this teen intersection would be very challenging to have a driveway going right into a stop.
If you provide that, that's part of the evidence.
So, we are, I have a, the pump may, further, right there in the picture, you can also see the bus stop of service at line seventy-seven and line seventy-eight and three-seventy-eight, which come from Alhambra, take very wide left turn, have to, to be able to left turn from Main Street, Alhambra onto Huntington Drive. It would basically block any and all access to that driveway as far as coming to now. I'm concerned about the damage to protected trees. Mr. Lau, who he's worked with, have either not looked carefully or chosen to ignore three California live oaks that will be affected by this. There is one at the border of our properties, literally within two feet of the border, and I have some pictures of it. This is the California live oak, Arroyo, Agua Polia, there's one in the backyard as well. And raining and damage to the water table for these two trees, which are on my property line, would be damaged by any construction which would require digging to create these three-story buildings. Further, over his, over my fence, I can see he has a live oak as well on his side of the fence, which is not as massive all in his declaration. I'm concerned about the, well, harmful elements that would be released. I, as a person, I, I live in the hundred-and-two-year-old Craftsman next door, and I had to replace my heating system. What the two could be replaced with a new significant asbestos abatement. A lot of the asbestos though is still on our walls because the mold does not touch the spine, but as soon as we start tearing down that house, asbestos will be in the environment as well as any lens in an old home, plus any other, uh, things in the environment. Concerned about a lot of parking, twenty units, twenty parking spaces, the unit can be seen letting out, but there are already impacted parking. Many of our neighbors and ourselves have the, I've been walking two to three blocks of parked cars, so not a lot of parking across the street, which Alhambra is currently parking. Concerned about the acres and problems regarding trash. He proposes curbside trash for nine units, a minimum of three bins, including the cycle, green, and trash, which would be twenty-seven extra bins in a frontage of only a single lot, and a lot of lot is very deep and there's lots of dark footage, nine in the frontage with twenty-seven crashing, as I can't see how it's possible. Also concerned about the, a question about the fifteen hundred square foot, the apartment for the lot, from an understanding and summary of our view on my plan, each minimum area per se, I'd probably view that should be fifteen hundred square feet, and five of the nine units do not comply with that. I might be mistaken on how that's right.
You are mistaken there, but that's.
This is my reading, I'm not, but I don't worry about. Concerned about the lack of an HOA, was discussed previously, that common areas, the common areas like sewage and water would not be covered. Mr. Lau, in last Thursday evening, proposing was not having an HOA can make it easier to sell his properties, however, that is not an issue for the neighborhoods. Worried about the flooding, privacy, we've discussed lots of view, I have a view of the San Gabriel Mountains from my home, and from Mount Holly to, I think I'm going to ask us, it would be to Mount Wilson from my office, and that would be entirely erased by three story structure in the way. And finally, Mr. Lau's, it's not happened so far, I'm with faith, we, I first learned about this at Bell's, and on the twenty-eighth of June, on the twenty-seventh of June, he had arranged, kind of with the neighborhood council, the LA three, neighborhood council, the land use and development committee. And the twenty-eighth the next day, the meeting was going to be Monday, and on Saturday, he went by, so, so some of the neighbors, I even spoke to him for about fifteen minutes, he not once mentioned that in forty-eight hours, there would be neighborhood meeting regarding the subject, and if it wasn't for Mr. Sarsa and, and his intimate connections in the, in the neighborhood, we would never know the immediacy of the meeting. So I tried to post quickly as possible and get more points in my letter.
Okay, that's, that's enough, we, we have a little layer. Thank you very much. Someone else wants to throw a few testimony again?
My name is Yolanda Sida, and I'm Secretary of the D C R O Historical Society. Today, I'm here on behalf of the Historical Society to request that the applicant's request be denied on the following reasons, some of these are already been stated. First of all, this is a single-family dwelling within the proposed HPOZ. It is a contributing house to the proposed HPOZ. It is a beautiful Craftsman bungalow that is historic, it's built in nineteen twenty-one, and falls well, it falls well within the community's historic character. Furthermore, the single-family dwelling are desired characteristics under the city's northeast plan, and so certifying the lot would go against the northeast plan, and building a three-level.
Say that again? Build a three-level.
Uh, to certify by this lot would be going against a northeast plan, since part of the culture trait is to keep the single-family dwellings, and this proposed project will not go against it, okay? Building a three-level structure in this part of the C R O is definitely out of character for the surrounding community. There is no three-level structure in the proximity of the proposed project site. I think that's the most disturbing part of this proposed, having a three-level structure. And we ask that you consider all these reasons and to reject the applicant's request, especially since this project plans to demolish that historic home. In addition to the concerns that the C R O Historical Society has, we concur with the concerns of parking and privacy that the neighborhood neighbors have. I thank you for listening, and we hope that this application is defined in the best interest of our community.
All right, you want to provide that, that's probably your.
Um, these are just my votes.
Okay, thank you very much for listening. Anybody else wants to give testimony? Okay, split, anybody else? Okay, come forward. Say your name and address.
Hi, everyone, I'm Sergeant Paul, my name is Lou Renadis, I'm the property owner of the property adjacent to the.
Right, good question.
Fifty-six forty-three to fifty-six forty-five, it's, we, my family has owned the property for about forty years now, and me, ten years before that. Our main concern is the, the, during construction and as well as after construction, as we do during construction, we're worried about the erosion to the property, the digging and the demolition of the, of the house in question. Also, the pollution, all the debris that would be entering my properties inside of our own property. We have few windows with the surface that face the property, noise level increases to a certain degree, my tenants only have window there, no central appearance, their windows is their way of a lot.
Sorry.
Good traffic, extra good track, and again, the intersection, how, I don't know if that section is going to be treated there, since my entrance is right before the light. I imagine that if this intersection continues to be blocked, it's going to jam up the entire area of traffic.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else wants to give testimony? Okay, then we have the applicant on the back.
Okay, before we, it's time to, uh, present some issues. I'm sorry. First of all, the first issue I wanted to discuss was the historic components of this. So, yeah, at first, the neighborhood council was in support of this, and sent out this map to know, you know, it was the same map that we had. So, and I'm looking through the history of this and where it came from and so on, so I was able to contact the Carol Shelwood, who is the keeper of the National Register of Historic Places in Washington DC, so she sent me an email stating that this is not, this is, this part of the area is considered eligible, but it is not in the officially listed, and also the document that she sent me, I can, I can find out the differences. First of all, in the, the document that made this area eligible, the Huntington Drive portion has been excluded, and in the document, there's explanation, I can submit this information to you, well, about, so, because this was the first preliminary study.
That, that was done by Caltrans?
Well, no, it was a subcontractor who was a historian who drove around like in a sixty-four-mile area.
And then the second map that you're showing is?
Well, that was from the eligibility from, from National Register of Historic Places. So, so they thought this map is in there too, so there's a explanation from how they got from this point to this point, how some of the areas that.
But that the agency that produced the second one, what was the agency?
So this is.
The, the other one down from, but that was not within the city?
No, no.
From Washington DC.
Yeah, yeah, and also this is not, well, basically, in Washington DC, what they do is they, they look at, they review and see if the case has merit, so basically, and then they did, they see the numbers here, they did an inventory of all the homes here, and you also can tell, even though the colors are reversed, that some of the buildings that were originally on this list would not, would no longer after they did further studies on it. So there's quite a few differences between these two maps.
Yes, but the, but just, just comment, we, we are in a charter city.
Right, and also.
We have a charter city, the, I understand the National Register may have to use that, but the platform in this case would be actually City of Los Angeles.
Right, so I'm also checking with the, Michelle Lee, who was the head of the Office of Historic Preservation, I went personally to the office, and she confirmed that this is not part of the HPOZ, so it doesn't show up in the city, so, 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 but I understand there's a proposal underway, so I feel that, that, you know, that we need for the information out of the.
And, and, and to be, to be, you know, fair to you also to the developer in this case, we consulted with the city attorney. The city, um, the fact that there is a motion out there to establish an H, a potential HPOZ to do a survey, the motion itself doesn't have merit to stop it, however, the environmental component does. So we, there is something missing here, because the environmental assessment didn't really address the potential impacts from historic resources. So that's somehow a setback that we need to, are real assess the project. And just to let you know that, but you can continue, okay, you can be brief, because we're not going to make a decision today.
Right, so the other thing was the trash pickup, I think we have trash enclosures inside the lot, but for some reason, the report says, you know, it would be curbside pickup, and that's not my intention.
What is going to be?
I have two trash.
Going to be centralized?
Yeah, so sometimes they would try to, they would try to pick up.
Is there, was there allocation indicated in the map where the trash?
Yeah, here was I, on both sides.
So that means you have to have homeowner association, did you have that correct?
The way, the way I, there's another project of the same issue, and what I required from the homeowner, the, the developer in this case, is to have a legal binding agreement with the company of the designation department to have them, to have the trash and not to have all these individual bits on the street, but that would be a conditional approval in case the, the project is approved. What other issues came up? Did you have a, do you have a letter from the neighborhood council? Do you, I mean, the neighborhood council?
Well, yes, I did, I met with, so, the first time they approved the project, they didn't, well, they not approved it, you know, and then the second time, although when we checked, it was a problem.
At least historic preservation issues. Now, the, is there a letter from the neighborhood council?
Uh, no, I think their meeting is coming up.
What they, there's, there's no final recommendation in other words.
Well, we have not counted the runway, we have meeting.
Now, the notification to the neighbor's side in the sample system by E T C. So, just to let the public know, because I know there were some issues about that, there is a company that does the notification by mail and by posting, and that, and because notification is a legal requirement, there are, there's evidence that notification was provided. What the community can do is to consult the file and see if their names are listed or if they're not listed in the mailing list. or if they're not listed in the mailing list. So, they would be grounds. But all the notices were sent out as required by law in this case.
May I also explain the, because I have been trying to get the neighborhood council to hear this case for a long time. So, because of, they were under exhausted measures, so they were not able to have meeting. And actually, they were telling me that it would be a meeting coming up in two weeks and then when the time comes, it didn't happen. So, I really didn't have so much, too much time. I have to contact the neighbors on the weekend, you know? I cannot, I don't think we could. So, there's only so, so many weekends between the meetings.
Okay, they, I mean, you're saying that there has been a good effort on your side to reach out to the community. Now, is there any trees on side? What we can see, is there any protected trees?
I was curious. I didn't know about that tree.
On side?
Yeah.
They're on there, what trees?
I, I walk the side and maybe, I'm not sure where it comes from.
Okay.
So, maybe it's, yeah, I don't know.
We can, we...
Well, my staff reported in the case a tree was submitted.
Oh, okay.
There were no protected trees on the side.
There were no protected, okay. Well, there was some written comments about the existence. So, we're going to look into that. We have aerial maps that date 5, 10 years ago. And if a, a tree was removed, we need to revisit that issue, you know, for compliance purposes. As I said, there, there was new information coming regarding potential impacts to historic resources. So, we are going to revisit where we're talking to the Historic Resource Section of the department. We're going to review this map. You can provide the map that you...
Yeah.
And I, actually, we're going to share it with the Historic Resource Staff and look into that. As far as the motion that was put out by council, again, we consulted with the city attorney, doesn't have teeth at this point. The, the environmental element has teeth. We can, basically, just questionary to whatever work we do with the Historic Resource people and see what, what are the facts? What is the evidence or what is the potential impacts? If there is any potential impacts, you know, we will, we will have remedies. Some of that remedies may be to ask you to comply with some architectural character issues in the community, in particular, to the style of this neighborhood. I need to think of something else depending about the evidences from the, you know, the research that probably we will have to do. I'm aware of this side. I was the planner for Northeast for a few years and I was aware of, you know, this neighborhood. So, I'm now, I'm somehow familiar with the neighborhood and the fact that it has potential historic, but it hasn't been decided yet. All right? So, I'm going to take this under advisement. We're going to further this, consult with the Historic Resource people. We will have an appointment. You're ready to take it?
Here's, here's, I think, doesn't have any requirements. There is street widening, then there is one line that needs to be relocated. I don't like the similarities in the white thing. They're all white.
Yeah, the, something else I want, I want to look into the issue of parking. Even though you mentioned that you can do apartments. I mean, you can, you can go ahead and do whatever, you know, you have right, property rights, but you are subject to environmental review because of these issues. So, one common argument that developers come in and say, I can develop a meaning, I can develop apartments, but there is a reason why you do that. It's a good potential. So, we're going to look into that now because this has been brought up to us. Whether you want to develop apartments or not, you know, there is an environmental issue that we need to deal with. And so, we're going to take this under advisement. We're going to talk to the Historic Resource people in our department. And if there is a need to reissue an MND, we will reissue the MND. If there is some additional mitigation measures, that will be to the decision. But we're, we're not going to have any other options at this point. So, the staff is, I mean, the public is going to be